Regular city council meeting. I ask if you have a cellphone, please silence it or turn it off. And if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And if we'd all stand, and if Councilman Williamson, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Migga, what you call a roll, please.
Councilmember Clark, Reed.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Atchison. Here. And Councilwoman Clark did advise me that she is sick, and that's why she is not here. Next is the approval of the agenda. And in light of the fact that Councilmember Clark is not here, and she is the head of the committee on the grocery desert committee in precinct one, we're going to remove that from the agenda. Are there any other corrections or additions to the agenda this evening? May I have a motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of item 6B?
So moved to court.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The agenda is approved. First up, presentations and recognitions. First item is the historical, cultural, and community significance of Holland Park.
I have asked, I am asking the city for a $15,000 grant to help pay for the pavilion at Holland Park. And I am going to read my thing here. I say to people I talk with about Albion, that were not born here, or who doesn't know the history, that Albion has its history and all that is good. Albion has gone through a season of bigotry and segregation where blacks were not treated equally as whites. This brought about the land that Holland Park now stands on, and the legacy of Mr. Robert Holland. Mr. Bonner and Professor Dick will talk about the history a little bit later. I stand here tonight to defend Holland Park and to inform those that are not knowledgeable of how we have managed, what we have, how we have managed to do what we have done at Holland Park with no monies coming from the city of Albion. The Holland Park project started, the Holland Park transformation, in August of 2014. We started by removing two rusty out, two rusted out play pieces off the park, and began to work and plan for the transformation. The committee agreed that Holland would be an intergenerational park, was something for people of all ages to enjoy. We started with the young kids' play area. Dr. Cheryl Mitchell, who was then Albion City Manager, completed a grant to firekeepers for $35,000. Me and Dr. Harry Bonner's youth group presented our request at the meeting to the Firekeepers' Revenue Board, and we received a total request of $35,000, which got us started and on our way. Mrs. Lex Stick and I did the research for the company that was chosen, Play World, and pieces that were placed in the children's section by the volunteer church group from Naperville, Illinois, along with students of Albion College and Albion Youth, who helped put the pieces together and place them with the help of the company engineer. Then came the children's walk-in garden. We applied to the philanthropic women's group for a grant, and we received $13,000 for it. On our next project was History Hill. This was felt, this we felt necessary, to be an educational piece of the park, and would tell the history of the area. By accessing the website on the kiosks, as well as seeing the pictures, tell the history of what had been there from the beginning. It tells the history of Al- area segregated school, and the man, Mr. Holland, that pressed change. Twenty-three people who lived in the area or went to the West Ward School were interviewed and recorded on the west side, on the website. Professor Wes Dick, Ms. Leslie Dick, and Professor Robert Walls worked with Greg Strand of Albion College to write a $25,000 grant to purchase the kiosks that you see on History Hill. Next came the workout area. Again, we started researching companies that provided machines that would interest and help our youth build their bodies and be healthier. With the help of Mrs. Amy Robertson, past president of the Albion Chamber of Commerce, we acquired $25,000 from the Calhoun County Visitors Bureau and placed pieces in the teens section. Holland Park is across the street from the Fork Senior Center. We felt it would be good for our seniors to have some outside fresh air fun and exercise. So after researching the idea, we applied for a grant from the Calhoun County Millage Board, Senior Millage Board, and received $10,000 and placed machines for the seniors to experience. At the request of Mrs. Arloona McCollum, we asked Dr. Tazzy to pick out the machines that he felt would be good for seniors, and he graciously helped us. Mr. Larry Williams, our recreation director, was very instrumental in helping us to get $90,000 from an in-bridge grant to add a handicap bathroom to assist our seniors and others in wheelchairs. It also put a coating on the asphalt of the senior section, fixed up the basketball courts and bleachers, and added night lighting to the courts. We were fortunate enough to be given bench seats to place around History Hill from those who would like to, for those who would like to sit and reflect. These were donated by the Albion Health Alliance and Citizens to Beautify Albion at the cost of $80, $800 each, no cost to the city. Flowers on History Hill was provided for monies received from the sale of dinners that we sold at the June teen celebration three years ago, for $156. Money and/or plants that I purchased, and plants that other citizens of Albion donated from their gardens. My chiropractor's mother-in-law came over from Jackson last August, and with a truck full of pastas and plants that will turn, will return every year to put on History Hill, but plants without water die no matter how healthy they were planted. They were planted. A watering system is necessary, and we have raised the money needed to have it installed, no charge to the city. I have raised approximately $198,000. And with the $15,000 we are asking for, we can access the Cronin Grant, which was $25,000, which would have put approximately $223,000 raised without using any money from the city. One last major project now that we have, and we will never, one last major project, not that we will never place anything else in Holland Park, but the last thing that is needed now is a pavilion, and the sidewalk around the park replaced so that the, our seniors feel free to walk them for exercise, and our children are not tripping and falling or uneven, on the uneven broken sidewalks. A pavilion so families can enjoy picnicking, have birthday parties, end-of-school celebrations, and et cetera. We are $15,000 short of what we need as a match to purchase the pavilion, but we need to purchase it before the 2020 price goes up. I am in the park a lot in the summer, working, planting, with the help of Ms. Delaney, Mrs. Shuler's volunteer group, pulling grass, filling the little libraries with books so that the children can get a book, lay on the grass, or go to a table and read. The book boxes were made and given to us by Mr. Bruce Haynes of Lansing, Michigan, who just wants to know that children have access to books, no expense to the city. It has also been said that Holland Park is underused. Holland Park is underused only to them who do not wish to use it. It has been referred to as a vanity project. I'm not sure what a vanity project is, but I thank Albion College for how they have helped us turn this park into a beautiful, useful place for those in the community to come and enjoy, come and check us out. So, I have, Mr. Bonner has been the troublemaker and the advocate of this park. And we have Mrs. Jess Roberts, we have Mrs. Dick, we have some more that might want to have something to say about Holland Park.
First of all, I'll take credit for that troublemaker.
Thank you.
I've been known to develop programs on behalf of our young people and our community. In fact, when I first started to, to do with this project, it came at the request of a young person who had seen some volunteer incentives at Holland Park and wanted to see if we could make a difference. And then that young person, Lisa Wilson, who grew up to be Lisa Harris, who now is an attorney out of Detroit, was the inspiration for me to start, get heavily involved. So at the request of your city manager at that time, and I didn't trouble you with the paperwork that went with that, but I did give it to the mayor in case you want to see it, where Lisa had requested the city manager to do something about that park. So, as you see in front of you, you noticed the year, and back then I had an Afro, I don't have one now.
Would like to see that.
So a lot of things over the years has changed, except for our passion for making a difference for our young people. Holland Park is the first place where a lot of our young people go in the summer, to hang out, to play basketball, to enjoy whatever there is activities out there. So it is a very busy destination. It is probably the most used park for young people, and anybody that understands youth in Albion knows that's where they go. In addition to that, the park is also the place that is named after Timo Canillas. And anybody that don't know the legend of our legendary recreation director, the basketball courts is named after him. So if you want to get a chance to go on there and check that out, you need to go out down there and see that, the Timo Canillas Courts. It's also the place, as you see on here, where we did the Black Family Union, that we started in 1991 or two, and was led by Dr. Daniel Bogan, who at that time was the vice president of the NCAA, and was coming back to Albion each year specifically for that project. What you also will see on here, it was actually supposed to be a section that it was named after his dad, that never happened. So the idea would be, part of this was be the continuation to complete that in honor of the Bogan family, who some of them still live here, and very involved in our community, but especially for the parents. So that's part of the history. The other part of the history, as far as the Black Family Union, I saw Les come in. Let me say too, before I forget, Betty here is also part of the Holland Park Task Force, but Betty would come up. Vivian and Les, are you speaking on behalf of the park project, initially a project of the day, or you came like that, did you know?
Yeah.
I definitely wish, I definitely wish. Her husband Wes, Dr. Wes Dick, has called Holland Park sacred ground. Why is it sacred ground? It is the historical location of the West Ward School District. It is the place where we did the Black Family Union for nine straight years. And as well as, it is also relevant distance of two of our arches churches, Lewis Chapel and Alpha Baptist. So there's a lot of reasons why, but if you're not passionate about the history of that, Les, you want to speak a little bit about the History Hill project and how it came in? And then also, Ms. Davis is here. And I also should say, we did the Black Family Union, we ended up changing the name in the end, because some people just felt uncomfortable because of being just called black. So we ended up changing the name to request from my friend Kathy Campbell, we changed it to the Albion Summer Homecoming Project, and that's what it was after we did the Black Family Union. But it still was held in Holland Park. And now we do June 10th, that I think you're going to talk about later. So we also have, I think, the Big Reed Project, which somebody will speak on. We also have the Fork Senior Center Project, so it's just not a place for black youth, black families, and so forth. It's a diverse group of people who respect the diversity, the history, and the culture of parks. So Les, what would you add to the thing about West Ward and the Black Family Union?
Well, I, I wasn't too sure how this was going to go, so I, I did prepare a statement. My name's Leslie Keller-Dick. I reside at 700 East Michigan Avenue in the fourth precinct. My precinct person is Markola Lawler, who has been very responsive to my needs in the fourth precinct, but I'm here to address a concern that is outside my precinct, but is within the city, and a common cause for all of us. I'm a member of the original Holland Park Transformation Committee as envisioned by Harry Bonner. I remember one day sitting with Harry in the pavilion and watching children who had emptied a garbage can, rolling around, using it for a playground equipment, and, and we both decided something needed to be done. The committee was chaired by Councilperson Len Reed, of course, you've heard her, and some of my comments are pretty much on the line of her story of how the committee went together and, and just went out big borrowing and stealing sometimes. I provided the historical content that was incorporated in both the successful Firekeepers' Playground and the Michigan Council for the Humanities History Hill Grants that brought, she says $35,000 for that, so it would have been $65,000 in grants to Holland Park initially. And, and today I continue to host two websites. One is an informational one about Holland Park and the activities there. It's on Facebook, it's called Holland Park Transformation, Harry's name. And another is at www.westward.albianwestward.net, and this informs the history of the installation at History Hill in Holland Park, which is a project that is the culmination of the grants that Robert Wall and Wes Dick and myself put together through a grant from the Council for the Michigan Humanities. I think that one was $25,000. Since those initial grants in phase one of the intergenerational plan for Holland Park, other grants included the current, have included the current Cronin Foundation and Firekeepers' matching grants, Kalamazoo River Cleanup Grant, and assistance from Senior Center, philanthropic women, other groups that have helped further the original vision, and have added to the council, the countless in-kind volunteer donations of many hours, equipment and expertise of grant writers, gardeners, scholars, student groups from Star Commonwealth and Albion College, church groups. We had a church group that came all the way from Illinois. City workers, recreation department, and many, many more have worked on this project. For the past, past 20 years, I've assisted my partner, Dr. Wesley Dick, in teaching a course at Albion College to incoming freshmen. We call the class A Sense of Place: Albion and the American Dream. And we offer it to incoming students who are curious about the new home while attending Albion College. As we read the local landscape in this class, we visit places that we can feel the ancestors' breath on our necks. Holland Park is one of those spaces imbued with the spirits of those who walked there before us. It is at the center of our shared indigenous, industrial, immigrant, migrant, educational history. The school at the center of this neighborhood provided an essential core to the industrial migrant community that surrounded it. And today it is an improved and vital gathering place for community and family events. I wholeheartedly support the city in assisting with funding to secure the matching grant for the completion of this visionary project that has added revenue, beauty, education, and recreation to our beautiful Albion city. So anyway, that's what I thought about this afternoon, after Len called me. It's a, it's been a wonderful journey to work since we saw those kids on that dusty avenue. I remember we were sitting in the pavilion, I don't know if you remember it, but I remember our kids, our kids deserve better than this.
Right.
And it is a place where the whole community can come together around the history of our communities. So I'm passionate that I, that I hope the city will continue to help us finish it up. And I know beyond this, there will be many, many more people that will provide volunteer service to keep, keep the dream alive.
Thank you.
If we could hear from Dr. Roberts and Luann from the Senior Fork Center next, and then we'll wrap this up.
May I, may I address the public's constituents or how they view the creation of the park?
We'll give you a chance to do public comments. I mean, it's, we need to kind of move along, but you can, during a public comment session, you can give your comments.
Hi, I'm Luann Summers. I am the director of your Fork Senior Center here in Albion, which sits directly across the street from Holland Park. And so I get to see on a daily basis the people that are using the park. There's a special section there that's designated specifically for seniors. It was designed for them to use. There is no other park in this city that I'm aware of that has a section for seniors. There's a lot of focus on children and rarely a focus on older adults. And so I think we need to celebrate that, celebrate that Calhoun County Senior Millage invested in Albion and in this park to give us that equipment, as well as another grant, I think it was $5,000, to help with the pavilion and the sidewalk that we would like to see. It is a generational park, the senior center, our seniors use it. There's children over there, we've had picnics, we've had parties, we've had luncheon learns and enjoyed the time in that park. So we certainly are in support of it. It's a celebration of Albion's history, some of the best celebration of Albion's history, and it's, it's a neat place to go, just kind of a sacred ground, as they have called it, I believe that. And I think that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. had a dream, and I think his dream is realized every day at Holland Park, when children and seniors of all walks of life play together, eat together, exercise together, and have fun together. So I am certainly in support of this effort.
Thank you.
My name is Jess Roberts. I live at 915 South Superior Street, and I am the director of Albion's Big Reed. And I would just like to say that when I think of Holland Park, I think of collaboration and innovation and dream and realization, and I think of community. And my, one of my favorite days of the year happens every year at Holland, which is either the last Saturday in September, or the first Saturday in October, this year the first Saturday in October, which is the big kickoff event. And I cannot tell you how important it is to me that that kickoff event happens in Holland Park, and I cannot tell you how thankful I am for the work that Len Reed has led to make Holland Park such an amazing space, to go and celebrate community and young people and reading and intergenerational relationships. So I would just say in terms of use, between 150 and 200 people come every year to Albion's Big Reed, which means that since Holland Park has been transformed, close to 1,000 people have made use of that park on one day alone out of the year. And I think that that is just a, that's evidence of the way that though the park is located in a particular precinct, it is a park for our entire community. And I would imagine that the council would be eager to vote to become financial collaborators in a project that so many other organizations have contributed financially to. I'm deeply thankful for all the ways that the council has supported the park, and I hope that, I hope that you will support it tonight with a vote to commit the $15,000 to the massive amount of money that Councilwoman Reed and others have raised for that, for our city in that place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions by council? Or comments? The one comment I wanted to bring to everybody's attention is, all of you do have a copy of the current five-year plan for Parks and Recreation, the master plan. And when you get a chance to look at page 39, it talks about the Holland Park transformation and the things that have been done, and the things that we're trying to wrap up, including the large-capacity pavilion are outlined in there. And that plan was approved by council in 2015, and it's a five-year plan and runs through 2020. So, next item is the Black History Month Proclamation. And I believe Ms. Kemp is here. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Proclamation recognizing February 2020 as Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we honor the extraordinary contributions made by African-Americans throughout the history of our nation, and we renew our commitment to liberty and justice for all. And whereas the national theme of this year's Black History Month, African-Americans and the Vote, coincides with the 150th anniversary of the 15th Amendment, which gave African-American men the right to vote. And whereas today, these rights are enforced primarily through the Voting Rights Act of 1965, and enduring legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and the Civil Rights Movement. And whereas this year also marks the 150th anniversary of the first African-American to serve in Congress. In 1870, Hiram Revels, a Mississippi Republican, served a one-year term in the Senate, where he fought for justice and racial equality. And whereas Senator Revels made history serving our nation in a building that had been constructed by slave laborers just a decade earlier. And whereas our nation's state and the city of Albion are strengthened and enriched by citizens of every race, religion, color, and creed. And whereas the promise of racial equality granted by our Creator is enshrined in our nation's constitution and enacted into our laws, we pledge to continue to stand against the evils of bigotry, intolerance, and hatred, so that we may continue in our pursuit of a more perfect union. Now therefore, I, Dave Atchison, Mayor of Albion, do hereby proclaim February 2020 as Black History Month in the city of Albion. And I'll let you address the event that's coming up in recognition of that.
Hello, I'm Zaraya Kemp. I live at 703 Valhalla Drive, and I'm here to present Kids at Hope Stand Up and Stand Out, first annual Black History Program, Black History Month Program. It is free to the public on February 8, 2020, at 3:00 PM at the First United Methodist Church Tenant Hall. This is 600 East Michigan Avenue, Albion, Michigan. Donations are accepted. We are asking for donations because we're trying to take a tour of a historical black college, so this will be part of our fundraiser money. We have a mixture of different schools throughout the community, like, well, different children throughout, that go to different schools. And we just, for one, thought it was a great opportunity for us to get everybody together so we can do an amazing thing for our community, and yeah, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. Next is proclamation recognizing February 4, 2020, as Albion Mail Carrier Appreciation Day. And I spoke with our postmaster today, but I don't think he was able to make it. So he was going to be here, but we'll make arrangements to go over to the post office and congratulate the mail carriers and thank them. So proclamation recognizing February 4, 2020, as Albion Mail Carrier Appreciation Day. Whereas the United States Postal Service is grounded in a single great principle, that every person in the United States, no matter who, no matter where, has the right to equal access to secure, efficient, and affordable mail service. And whereas the U.S. Postal Service has the universal service obligation to deliver everywhere, while private carrier service can exclude certain areas, leaving some communities without access to services altogether. And whereas Albion mail carriers faithfully make sure the mail gets through six days a week, 52 weeks a year, and whereas Albion mail carriers deliver medication to dozens of housebound patients across our community, helping to prevent complications that can arise due to missed medication. And whereas every business and organization in the greater Albion area, from the largest corporation to the smallest operation, relies on our mail carriers for the delivery of advertising, billing, and goods to our residents. And whereas most of the orders people place to online retailers still have to be processed by brick-and-mortar facilities and delivered by people. And whereas the volume of absentee ballots cast via the U.S. Postal System in this presidential election year is expected U.S. Postal System in this presidential election year is expected to set new records in Albion. And whereas it is appropriate to acknowledge just how important mail carriers are to our daily lives. And whereas National Carrier Appreciation Day is observed annually on the February 4. Now therefore, I Dave Atchison, Mayor of Albion, do hereby proclaim February 4, 2020, as Mail Carrier Appreciation Day in the city of Albion, and I encourage everyone to take time out of their day to thank the person responsible for delivering their mail. Proclamation recognizing February 3, 2020, as Missing Persons Day in Albion. Whereas every day in the United States, approximately 2,300 people are reported missing. And whereas everyone has a friend, mother, sibling, child, neighbor, or coworker they see every day. No one expects to have them mysteriously and with no explanation to disappear from their lives. And when whereas, when a person goes missing, it can be an adult as often as it is a child. Women disappear more than men, and seniors are at risk too. And whereas health risks, natural disasters, unplanned circumstances, and of course, those who are taken against their will, fall into the list of statistics. And whereas we often think it won't happen to us, it is often hard to attract attention of those unfamiliar with the missing person to become involved. And whereas Michigan ranks in the top 20 states with the highest number of missing persons. Whereas there are just under 4,000 children, wives, husbands, sisters, brothers, and cousins missing in the state of Michigan. And whereas the number of missing people in Michigan has decreased by 20% over the last four years to increase public awareness and the efforts of very dedicated law enforcement individuals and many volunteers. And whereas National Missing Persons Day is observed annually on February 3 to focus the attention of the entire country long enough to recognize a missing person. Now therefore, I Dave Atchison, Mayor of Albion, do hereby proclaim February 3, 2020, Missing Persons Day in the city of Albion. This is the last proclamation on the agenda. Proclamation recognizing February 11, 2020, as Shut-In Visitation Day in Albion. Whereas a shut-in is a person who, due to physical, mental, or emotional reasons, is not able to leave his or her home. These conditions oftentimes cause a person to feel lonely, isolated, sad, and cut off from the rest of the world. And whereas an estimated 613,000 people between the 40 and 64 years of age, predominantly men, have withdrawn from society. The number of older shut-in people in the United States has exceeded 2 million, and researchers expect that figure to rise sharply in the near future. And whereas shut-in individuals lose the freedom most of us take for granted, the ability to go for a walk, eat in a restaurant, go shopping, or visit a park. And whereas even though we realize the reality of life for shut-ins is a recipe for loneliness, we often overlook opportunities to brighten their lives. Our lives are busy, and it is too easy to just put off visiting someone who is shut-in. And even the important people in our lives can slip through the cracks. And whereas the first national shut-in visitation day was established by Presidential Proclamation in 1972, and has been celebrated on February 11 for many years. And whereas the simplest gesture and offering of a few minutes of our time can make a huge difference. And whereas the senior services of Southwest Michigan through the Meals on Wheel programs deliver meals to several Albion shut-ins. Now therefore, I Dave Atchison, Mayor of Albion, do hereby proclaim February 11, 2020, as Shut-In Visitation Day in the city of Albion. I urge the residents of Albion who are fortunate enough not to be shut-in to visit those that are less fortunate. And I urge this be the first of many visits, a new beginning of concern and caring in the days that follow. May we use this day to give time and attention to someone who could use a smile, a hug, and a friendly face. Okay. Public hearing. Item for public hearing this evening is the creation of an Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, District for Downtown Development. Go ahead and do the public hearing now, or read the resolution?
You open the public hearing.
Okay. So, the public hearing is now open. Those of the public that wish to come forward and state their opinions and comment on this, please do. Please state your name and address for the record. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wish to make a comment this evening? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm John Guyer, 104 Irwin Ave, Albion. I found that the notice that came out was somewhat contradictory. I went to the Board of Review in 2019, and they sustained a value on my apartment complex of 309,000. And so, I just wonder about, you know, what, what is the plan? What is the, what is this program about?
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? We will close the public hearing, and we'll go into the request approval of Resolution 2020-02, establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation, or Oprah, District for Downtown Development. Oprah District. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Discussion. Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, are we able to give some type of small introduction about what the Oprah is for in consideration of a person that didn't quite understand?
You want to do that?
No.
No?
They're right here.
Mr. Pries, would you help us?
Please.
Sure thing. And the key word there was "small," right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So, an obsolete property rehabilitation act is allow, is an act that was put in place for distressed communities, which Albion is, that allows us to incent redevelopment. It basically freezes the taxable value on a property, which promotes redevelopment without having the taxes increased. The district does nothing. It just allows the ability, ability for projects to come forward and ask for an exemption. Exemptions are based on specific projects, a defined amount of investment, and again, the council would have to approve those exemptions. So, the district just sets up the area and gets us ready for those kinds of projects. Is that short and quick and key enough?
But it does not indicate that...
I need to talk to you offline.
But it does not mean that all properties within that district are obsolete? Does not mean that?
No, no, no.
All right.
The eligibility for a project that's being, that's asking for an exemption, they'd have to be obsolete.
Right.
Or functionally obsolete, contaminated, or the other one, lighted.
So, if council approves this resolution, then you will be authorized to utilize this as a redevelopment incentive tool where appropriate.
Where appropriate. It just adds a tool to our toolbox. Like I said when I gave the presentation two weeks ago, three weeks ago, whatever that timeframe was, it seems like yesterday, we can still do Oprah's outside of this district. It just helps the process along and shows that Albion is proactively seeking redevelopment within that area.
Any further comments or questions by Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I did notice on the map that was given to us with the paperwork, it's a little, lack of a better term, a jetty that goes across Cass Street, around the, what we all know as the Martinizing Building, the old dry cleaner, and also what is now the Robotics Center, that was at one time the bridal shop. And also that it does run down the railroad tracks and does not include buildings on Michigan Avenue, such as the old empty restaurant that could sure use some help. I realize you say these lines are not written in stone. I just want to be sure they're not drawn with any, any type of leaving something out or putting something in that shouldn't be. So, is there a way of moving these lines, or?
Not tonight. So, because the public notice went out with this is the district, it'd be too late to do it tonight. If you chose not to approve this district, we could always reevaluate those lines. But again, I want to make it very clear, this doesn't prohibit a project coming into the, what is it, the old Chinese restaurant that you called it?
Yeah.
To that location and using Oprah if it was appropriate. You can do the district and the exemption in one night. You just do two public hearings.
Councilman Smith? I'm sorry.
No, she answered. She said it right away.
Further questions? Okay, it's been moved to second to approve this Resolution 2020-02, establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation Oprah District for Downtown Development, Oprah District. Mr. Domingo, please read the roll.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Next up, adoption of eight brownfield plans for the city of Albion. Request approval of Resolution 2020-03, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for 106 to 108 East Erie Street. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Mr. Pries, if we could... Thank you. Good point. Okay. So, we'll open the public hearing for public to make comments, state their opinions. If you have, wish to come forward to make a comment, please do so. State your name and address for the record. Open the public hearing.
Hello, everyone. Jim Stewart, 205 West Oak Street. And also, my wife and I run the bookstore, Sterling Books &amp; Brew. And just wanted to encourage you that this is something that, as a small business owner downtown, it's really important to us that you move things along. We're, our, the welfare of our store depends on this downtown getting a kickstart. And so, just my two cents worth, I would love to see things be expedited and things move along. Thank you.
Are there further public counsel information?
I just want to clarify, this public hearing is on all of the brownfield plans?
Yes. Yes, thank you for clarifying that.
Individually, okay.
Right. So, as Councilmember Williamson, Mayor Protim clarified that this public hearing is for comments on all eight of these resolutions, all eight of these brownfield plans. So, if you have, would like to come forward and make a comment, please do so. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Okay. Now may I have a resolution, or a motion to approve Resolution 2020-03, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for 106, 108 East Erie Street? Would you restate your motion, or?
So moved.
Thank you. And approval. Second? Okay. Now, Mr. Pries, would you walk us through the first one? And I believe they're all very similar, a few individual changes, but if you explain one, we should all understand it.
Well, what I was going to do is, because I, I, we did a work study on this.
Yep.
So, hopefully, all your questions were answered then. But to kind of just bring you up to speed on this, this is eight individual projects. Each one's going to take its own resolution to be adopted and, and carry the project forward. This is a, you know, it's a time for celebration for Albion. We've come a long ways. I've been here just over three years, and I think I've worked every single day on this big Albion plan. So, to see us at this point is incredible. We're doing a lot of work trying to find the funding for these projects and reading, you know, all the narratives that are being put together. This, this started over eight years ago with, with people interested in, you know, redeveloping the downtown and, and that being the Ludington Center and the Courtyard and each, you know, building block project that happened after that. So, this is a, this is a win-win for the community, and it's a, it's a great, it's a great thing to celebrate. And I think we sometimes lose that in the minutia of approvals. So, I wanted to make sure I got that out because I often forget it. So, each project is designated by its addresses. They're all eligible as a functionally obsolete eligibility through the legislation. It allows for about $19 million of investment. The tax capture is capped at what is in each individual plan, and that is allowable by law. So, for tax capture for, for the first one, we're talking about, this, this one's 106, did you say? 106, 108. They don't go in my order. Okay. We're talking about $631,343 that's being captured for eligible activities to assist this project be sustainable in the long run. Eligible activities, as I said, are defined by law. They include demolition, both external and internal, site prep, asbestos and lead abatement, things like that, any environmental hazards that have to be abated, that can be included in there. Trying to think what else you need to know, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody in the council have a question for Mr. Pries?
You have, you have your spreadsheet that we spent some time on going over at the last, last meeting?
Thank you. Seeing no questions. Mr. Domingo, would you read the roll? This is voting in favor of to approve Resolution 2020-03. Those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Please read the roll.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Next, may I have a motion for a request approval of Resolution 2020-04, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for 403 South Superior Street?
So moved. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion by council? Okay. So, the motion before us is to approve Resolution 2020-04, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for 403 South Superior Street. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Mr. Domingo, please read the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. May I have a motion, request approval of Resolution 2020-05, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for 300 to 304 South Superior Street?
So moved. Support.
Is there any discussion? Okay. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Mr. Domingo, please read the roll.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. May I have a motion to request approval of Resolution 2020-06, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for 313 to 315 South Superior Street?
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Mr. Domingo, please read the roll.
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Okay. Item E, may I have a motion for approval of Resolution 2020-07, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for 213 to 221 South Superior Street?
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Mr. Domingo, please read the roll.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Item F, request approval of Resolution 2020-08, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for 104 to 108 South Superior Street. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Vote yes if you're in favor, no if you're opposed. Mr. Domingo, please read the roll.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Item G, request approval of Resolution 2020-09, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for 111 to 119 South Superior Street. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion? If you're opposed, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Mr. Domingo, please read the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Item H, may I have a motion for approval of Resolution 2020-10, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for 101 to 109 South Superior Street?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Okay, if you're in favor, vote yes, if you're opposed, vote no. Mr. Domingo, please read the roll.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton?
Yes.
Public comments. If anyone has public comments on agenda items this evening, please come forward, state your name and your address, you have three minutes, and these are on agenda items.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Mark Quetta Frost, and I live at 520 West Cass Street, here in Albion, just down the street, right across the street from Holland Park. And so, I'm here to discuss, or just to make a comment on your vote before you vote. I also work with youth in this community, I've been working with youth for over twenty years, but living across the street from the park, you see daily what happens over there. And I've been living at Cass Street for a little over ten years, and it is, it has changed tremendously for the positive. Since Ms. Reed has concentrated on that park, as people said, it's intergenerational, but it's intercultural as well, I was actually shocked to see African-American, not just African-American families, but Caucasian families with children coming down, playing on the park, early in the morning, on Saturday morning, I just kind of looked over and I was like, wow, that's different, because we were used to seeing, you know, young people of color going over there playing basketball and things like that. But it is open, and people are actually using it for what it's there for. They are partaking in the books, young people, I see them running across the street, taking a book, leaving a book, and the violence and things that were happening on the park has diminished a hundredfold. People are there taking part in church events. Our church, Macedonia, had a youth rally there just, just last summer, and it was well-attended by our members and people from the community. Lewis Chapel uses it, Bethel uses it, all churches use that as a public forum to bring people together of all ages, culture. And so, I just want to make sure that you guys know that it is something that is utilized by all people of the community, and it is for the positive, so I do hope that you vote to improve it with the pavilion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Vivian Davis, 901 Huntington Boulevard, and since I did not get a chance to do my prepared statement, I do want to enter, reiterate what Mrs., what Ms. Reed has done has been tremendous, and I've been in contact, in addition to cultural and intergenerational, it really impacts people that you don't know about. For instance, when students, when my children come, grandchildren come, I can always take them to Holland Park to tell them about their father's history, where he grew up, and there is no other place like that in the community. I've also been in contact with Mr. Bill, Dr. Bill Holland, who has written a book on the pathway Backpack to Briefcase, and it's a parent's guide for college matriculation, or college functioning for parents. I said, why didn't you do this when my kids were in college, but this is very good, and what he's doing, he's collaborating with KCC, as well as with Marshall Public Schools and Homer Public Schools, and some of the priest seats will go to the Holland Park restoration, as well as the pavilion. So, we have people that are in our corner that we really don't know about, so I encourage you to support this initiative, and it makes Albion and the community look really good in terms of diversity and cultural history. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional public comments this evening? Seeing none? Next is the consent calendar, we have one item, approval of regular session minutes for January 21st, 2020, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Items for individual discussion, request approval, a second reading and adoption of ordinance 2020-01, and an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 4, to add Division 6, Sections 2, 320 through 2, 327, Arts Commission. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Is there discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll do a roll call, thank you. Would you please read the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton?
Yes.
Next item, discussion approval to adopt the fiscal year 2020 city of Albion fee schedules as presented and/or modified and authorize the administration to implement the fee schedule as adopted. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there support? Okay, discussion. Counselman Smith?
Okay, please bear with me, a few things in this I just don't quite understand. And I have discussions with the city clerk on some parts of this. As you go through the fee schedule, if you just, you know, lay it out in front of you in count pages one, two, three, page three still contains, it's under cemetery, lot purchased cemetery, columbarium niche, Albion resident, a little lower, also non-resident. Then, lower still, we have fees for brave open, close weekdays, Saturday, Sunday, holiday for cremation, do we do cremation? And also, on the next page, there are three that say columbarium, which is basically reopening a columbarium niche to add a second person. Again, we have no columbarium available, and so I wonder if those should be there or if they should be stricken. I'll leave that for more discussion. And I am definitely confused when we get down to the sewer connection fees and also the sewer demand charge fees. The sewer connection fees, this is something that the city manager and I have been having a discussion on. When the original increase for sewers was adopted and approved by the council on April 1st, 2019, during the, and I didn't read the entire resolution, the city manager did, I watched the video, all through the video, they were saying, raising the rates. To myself, and I think to most people in the audience, when you say raising the rates, you're talking about raising your monthly bill, not raising a one-time connection fee. So, for that to be cleared, I'll leave that to the city attorney. Mr. Hartness?
You're asking for my opinion?
Yes, sir.
So, if, in, in resolution, it looks like it was, well, it was on April 1st, the specific language was that the city's wastewater rates be increased pursuant to city ordinance 86206 Sub B Sub 6. So 86206 Sub B Sub 6 specifically says rates, each user connected to the city system shall pay charges equal to the rates adopted by resolution of the city council. So, that's what, that's what the council adopted on April 1st.
So again, that said, each user connected shall pay rates?
Shall pay charges equal to the rates adopted by resolution of the city council.
So in your opinion, does that also include the initial connection?
The way that the ordinance language reads, it reads connected as past tense, so it would imply that someone would already be connected to the system.
So, it's been moved, are there, is there further questions, comments, discussion? Counselman Williamson?
Just to clarify that, the cemetery piece, and someone can interject if I'm wrong, but from what I understand, you know, we don't, we don't do cremations, but we also don't do embalming either, I mean, this is about placement of remains, and so, it's a dis- it's a discounted rate, because of course, the burned-up powder, the remains are smaller than a body, and so it's just, it's just to differentiate between what's being put into place on the cemetery side. So I just wanted to clarify that for people who might...
Okay. So, I've got a question for our city manager, based on the discussion that we've had and the legal opinion offered by the city attorney. Are you motivated to make changes to this, this rate, the fee structure in front of us, or are you still recommending it be approved as is?
I, I recommend that it be approved as is, Your Honor.
Okay. Counselman Williamson?
I also want to mention that there have been several years in a row now that city, that it has come up through city employees and up to the city managers, thus to try to increase these rates. Generally, it always gets beaten back and rates get pushed back, so while, while I'm inclined to support approving it as is and, and moving forward, just as the city manager is, there needs to be some honest discussion about the cost of these things goes up over time, and we, we need not kid ourselves and get ourselves in a situation where in five years, we have to, we have to do what we did with the water bills, and that's no fun. So, I think we should go forward and approve the fee schedule, keeping in mind that 2021 is going to look a lot different, because it's, it's getting expensive.
Yes. Counselman Smith?
And I concede to what the counselor just said, it has been approved by the council on April 1st of last year, that the fees will be raised seven and one-half percent per year for the next five years through 2024. So we know that those, those raises are coming, and we do expect them. I would request that the city manager please recheck the math on the seven and a half percent raise on all of these sewer demand charges, on the rest of 2019 and 2020, as per adding seven and one-half percent. Does the report be done afterwards?
Well, if the rate amounts aren't correct, and we need to make them correct, so we, I couldn't support approving something knowing that it's not correct. Counselwoman Lawler, did you have a comment, question? Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, were you talking?
So his, Counselman Smith said that the, he checked some math, he pointed a couple out to me, and I conclude, or I agree with him that gee, it wasn't seven and a half percent. So, we, we can't approve something if we suspect the fees are not correct. That's my opinion.
What I would, what I would recommend at this point that the council does is approve all of the rates except for the sewer demand charges, and we will review those and bring those back for further action. I recommend that you approve the rest of the fee schedule.
Okay. So, let's, need to modify the, or amend the motion. Well, the motion was, as written was to approve it as amended, and the...
As amended.
The fee schedule, which is to approve the fees except the sewage rate fees at this point. Counselwoman Spicer?
Well, I was just thinking, just in the interest of time, it, it wouldn't kill us to postpone this for, be approved for two weeks, this fee schedule, because I think that's when we would bring it back to us, once the changes are made here.
Counselman Williamson?
Okay, so I'm going to express my extreme frustration about this. So, we've talked about this at at least two meetings, with many weeks in between each of them, it always came down to sewer and to cemetery, and I'm, I'm a little frustrated as to why it hasn't been fixed. So, I, I'm inclined to support tabling until the next meeting for, for the sake of time and public interest, but I'm really, like, the next time it comes back, it needs to be fixed, like, we need to have the quality in front of us, like, if it's seven and a half percent, or ten percent, whatever it is, and a really good explanation as to why we did what we did. So, if someone can make the motion to table it until the next meeting, that would be fine, I would be in support of that, but it, but it is, it is, this is a waste of time for us.
So, Counselwoman Spicer, do you want to make a motion to table?
I will let Counselman Smith do that. Do you want to table it?
Sure, I, I will make the motion to table the fee schedule until the next meeting, so the changes can be correct.
Is there support?
Support.
All those in favor of tabling this until the next meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll table it. Item C, to approve community recycling center agreement extension and modification between the County of Calhoun and the City of Albion for the period January 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2020, under the same terms and conditions and at the same rates and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, is there further discussion? Mr. Domingo, would you read the roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton?
Yes.
Next item, to authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations with Granger Waste Services of Lansing, Michigan, on the terms, conditions, and prices for modification and extension of the city's current rubbish collection contract with Granger, to include the following minimum additional options. One, alternate pricing for curbside recycling collection services, together with an opt-out provision for individual customers, if possible, as long as such an option does not adversely impact the pricing for other customers. Two, alternate pricing for a five-year contract extension versus a three-year contract. And three, alternate pricing for smaller rubbish carts that reduce pricing if possible, as long as such an option does not adversely impact the pricing for other customers. The city manager shall submit the proposed contract extension to the city council, together with his recommendations for consideration for award of a contract not later than March 16th, 2020. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Can't support, is there discussion? Okay. Mr. Domingo, would you read the roll?
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton?
Yes.
Item E, to approve the purchase of the Acxiom Forensic Software Program, cloud storage, and annual pass training from Magnet Forensics of Herndon, Virginia, in the amount of twelve thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, to permit the Department of Public Safety to perform forensic analysis of cell phone, computer, and social media data in accordance with the search warrant processes, with said costs to be fully reimbursed by the U.S. Internal Revenue Service. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Set.
Okay, is there discussion? Okay. Mr. Domingo, would you read the roll?
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton?
Yes.
Item F, request approval fifteen thousand dollar supplemental funding for Holland Park Pavilion, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay, discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Domingo, would you read the roll?
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Can I vote?
Yeah.
Smith?
Absolutely, yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton?
Yes.
Item G, request approval of the city manager 360-degree performance review parameters Item G, request approval of the city manager 360-degree performance review parameters and process. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, discussion. I'll start off by saying the reason this is on here is I have advocated and recommended that we do include a 360-performance review. The city manager made that recommendation when we were negotiating his contract for hiring. So he will have ample opportunity to address this. If his recommendation has changed or he wants to explain the recommendation for it, we will need to agree on who would be included in that 360-degree review. My recommendation would be to include, obviously, all council members, the chairs of the city boards and commissions, the chamber of commerce, president of chamber of commerce, department directors within the city, and the city attorney. We could, we have been provided by our labor attorney sample survey questions. And one method to do that would be via Survey Monkey, collect those, tabulate the results. And that would provide us, in addition to the standard form and methodology we've used in the past, would provide us insight and feedback from key stakeholders. First, I would ask the city manager to give us his thoughts on a, including a 360-degree performance review.
Your Honor, I, I strongly support a 360-degree performance evaluation as we had discussed during my contract negotiations.
And do you have any comment on the list of stakeholders that I identified, additions, deletions?
Well, I just received this information tonight and I don't know if I'm ready to comment on it, so.
That's fair.
I'd like to have time to, to consider the list.
Okay. So comments by council. Okay. Councilman Williamson?
In an effort to be fair, I think, I think it'd be okay to, this, this is one of the things that we could table and give the manager an opportunity to review and come back with feedback. That would be, that would be perfectly.
Or we could go ahead and, yes, we can, absolutely, don't have an issue. Or we could approve having the 360-degree performance review and we'll come back with the specifics, with whatever your preference is. Make a motion, sir.
Well, I move to table this discussion until next meeting.
It's been moved to table?
Support.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Okay, item H, discuss the Juneteenth celebration planning. And I'll, Councilman Reed, you have longstanding led this. Yep, so I'll.
I would like to table this until next time too, because I've started pulling out my stuff and, and working on it. So I would like to table this until next meeting.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, future agenda items. From council. Oh, thank you, there is another additional item. My apologies. It's on here somewhere. Okay, item I, request approval to direct the City of Albion Recreation Commission to prepare a recommended update to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Each of us has a copy of the master plan. And why it is imperative that we get this updated is there are a variety of grants from the state that unless you have an approved five-year plan in place, you're not eligible to apply for those. It's a comprehensive document, takes a while, and I would, would, I would ask for a motion to task our recreation commission, which we've recently established, no one's been appointed yet, to prepare a recommend, recommended update to this. It's not the final document. The ordinance requires them and they obviously will work closely with the recreation director and the city manager. And then it will come before council for approval. So, Councilwoman Spicer?
Thank you. Is there a date certain for establishing the commission?
Soon as we get enough people that have volunteered to serve on that, that come across the city from the precincts and they've submitted their applications, then I'll put forward the appointees and the council will vote on it.
Okay, and then you said something about grants available? Is there a deadline?
Just, just the point is, we have to have the plan updated, which is why I'm asking to get it tasked. City Attorney Harkness?
I just offer that in terms of the recreation commission, it technically isn't effective until 30 days following the second reading.
Okay. So we have two more weeks, something like that?
Yep.
Councilwoman woman Reed?
Do you think we need to have a study session on this?
I think that once we get the commission staffed, we certainly could have a study session, but I think that's one of the things that the recreation commission falls under their purview to make a recommendation. It doesn't have to be adopted. But that would not burden the recreation director and city staff to invest their all of their time and effort doing this. So. Councilman Williamson?
Okay, so I have a couple concerns here and one of the, and one of them goes back to the reason why I championed having a recreation commission. So first, we don't actually have a recreation commission, like, a functional one yet. So we don't have enough people. It hasn't meant they don't know what they're doing. And then secondly, one of the reasons I champion the recreation commission that is, would be this body that was going to independently look at what we're doing right now, what's working, what's not working, and provide recommendations to the city manager and the department head. And, and that could be, as part of that could be a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. My concern is, is that we're, we don't even, like, we're just, we're challenging them with something right up front that they have no say in. And so to achieve buy-in and leadership in the community, they should probably have a say and a voice in what they're going to do next as a deliberative body. So I'm just, I'm, I just caution, I know that the idea is to move quickly, but I think the idea is also to move smart, in a smart way. So I just think that this is maybe a little cart before the horse when it comes to recreation commission. But I, but I agree, a five-year plan is, or some sort of plan, if, if something has to come out of that.
There has not much to my surprise been much of a response from the community with people interested in serving on that commission. And what I had hoped was if that was going to be something that they were going to work on throughout the remainder of the year, so that we could have it in place before this one expires, which is 12 months from now, that that, people would look at this and go, oh, I could really, I could really be part of the, whatever the future of the recreation is, is going to go. But if you would like to table this, we certainly can do that.
I'm just being the bad guy tonight.
No, you're not being the bad guy at all, but, but please, you have, you have identified somebody and that individual is, is absolutely well-qualified and willing to serve. Help me find other people from the other precincts. So is there a motion to table?
I'm going to table this.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, future agenda items. City Attorney, do you have anything for us?
No, you don't.
Okay. So we'll go to public comments. If you wish to come, Councilman Williamson?
I was, I, I'm going to submit some changes to the downtown street cafes ordinance to Attorney Harkness. And hopefully by the next meeting, we can have something in draft form for people to talk about.
As I get older, similarities, trying to say, I actually, I have completed a draft of that ordinance and have sent it to the clerk and can be on for the next meeting.
Oh, with the changes?
Yes. With some, well, the changes that you.
Can you send it to me too, if I could, like, look?
Sure, because the, the changes that, at least we had discussed last time were, obviously, we had to make modifications to the zones because of the zoning plan update. So we've integrated that. We've also expanded the dates for, for operation. Other than that, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if there were.
That's great.
Okay.
Can you share it with the entire council then?
I most certainly can.
All right, public comments.
My name is Stacy Stewart. I live at 205 West Oak Street. And I'm making a public comment in regard to the possibility of utilizing some of the sidewalk funding that I spoke with the previous city manager about a, a year ago and we are putting together pinpoints on areas that are the, the largest, you know, problem areas. And it's now started to warm up and I, you, you go for a walk, I mean, I, obviously, I'm one of the few people rolling around in a wheelchair, so I unfortunately get the bulk of the complications, but a three or four or five-inch discretion, uh, uh, lift or discrepancy between the two sidewalks is really an obstacle. I'm in people's yards, I'm stuck in snowbanks, which, that's fine. But there's a lot of dips down where you actually get stuck in them. And I'm just kind of pushing you a little bit as far as the possibility of utilizing some of those fundings. I also know that, I've seen it in, in other places. I was over at Marshall recently. They actually just had taken a, a concrete saw and sawed the top of it off. So I don't know if it requires, you know, digging out the whole section, removing the root, et cetera, possibly harming the tree. They just literally took a saw and cut the intruding, yeah, ground down or whatever they did. It looked like a straight saw. I don't know how they did it. But it just made the sidewalk smoother. And there are lots of places where the sidewalk sections are missing and there's been sand replaced in it. So it's just, it's getting to the point where a lot of them are impassable. I was on River Street today over the bridge, which, you, you have to kind of be a little bit careful just because the traffic coming through there is quick, pretty quick as well. I'm just requesting that you consider looking at doing some improvements on the sidewalk.
Stacy, could, could you kind of jot down those places that you go, did you see those?
Yeah. There was also a database made by Emily Smith last year, and it's got a whole bunch of them. We actually worked, went out with GPS and walked around and identified them. And I'm pretty sure that we could get our hands on that database. She used a GIS.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that's got a lot of them.
We have other public comments this evening?
I know I did it once, but I'll be quick. Jim Stewart, 205 West Oak. I just want to say thank you. As Amy said, this is a big deal. We've come a long way. And for three years, this, I'm very, I'm thrilled that we're taking the next step on the downtown redevelopment. And I think it's good for our city, citywide, and leads to new opportunities. And I'm excited for those new opportunities. I'm also thrilled about the Holland project, that, that we're going to get a chance to put a, kind of the last, at least for now, the last thing on it. So I want to compliment the city council on the way you guys are working together and coming prepared. It's impressive. And I just want to say, as a citizen, I'm very thankful for what you guys are doing with all your studying and being prepared and coming to your meetings. And for manager McCleary, Mr. McCleary, thank you very much. Very professional. Appreciate what you're doing.
Juanita Solis Ketter, 1211 Edward Street. I am also excited about the establishment of the Opera District. I think, you know, it's just a great thing for us to move forward. And thank you to the people that have the vision to put something like that in place and the capital investment and everything else that they're going to do. On a smaller scale, in my neighborhood, right behind me, they're fixing up this house completely. New windows and all inside, carport and everything else, either rent it or sell it, I don't know. Across the street from me, you know, they're siding their, their garage. Again, another house that's empty, but it's going to be sold or rented. Around the corner, a house that was totally done over inside and they're putting the roof on. And it's exciting to walk the neighborhood and hear those hammers and hear the saws and I'm so excited. But anyway, my second, my other thing is Menho Cook is coming up, the 16th of February, from 12:30 to 2:00. The First Baptist Church on Haven Road. I want to see everybody there. Some of you are cooking, the men. And I know you get help from the wife sometimes, but that's all right. But it's a great event, a great community event. I see us all working together, doing things positively for the, for Albion. And so that's why I love this town. Hope to see you there. Tickets are $8. Thank you.
I'm not as lens troublemaker, but as a person that does a lot of different things in this community. So I would hope that the same kind of energy and effort that we are putting, supporting Holland Park would be, would be done for some of the parks in the city. A lot of work, but a lot of people want to be Victory Park or McCullough Park. But it takes a lot of different energy and work. And it would take a community effort, like when we did it at Victory Park before. With Victory for Kids, it was a community effort. So I would say in front of the council, whether it be through the recreation commission and the parks plan, that you make sure that you're going to include some kind of effort to do the same kind of effort we have in the model through Holland, we can do it for the rest of the city. So that's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager McCleary, clerk Domingo, residents of the city of Albion, and those watching this evening on TV. Good evening, Gary Tompkins, York County Commissioner. And it's always great to be with you folks each and every month, multiple times. Just got a couple of notes to, to brief with you and then we're going to talk a little bit about my favorite subject, just for a few minutes, as we always do. First and foremost, if you know anyone that's having trouble with property taxes, delinquent property taxes specifically, up through February 14th, there is still availability at the county treasurer's office to be able to get a hardship extension, as many other programs are available. Interesting enough, at the Precinct 1 Town Hall meeting that was held just this past weekend, was able to connect with one of the residents there to be able to get some help for them and, and point them in the right direction. So again, it is an opportunity to keep your house, keep you in your house as long as you can, or anybody that you know. So certainly take advantage of that opportunity. So if you do know anybody, please pass them on to the county treasurer's office for some additional help. Secondly, it's a reminder from the Cowan County Health Department that it's not too late to get your flu shot. You can get those flu shots, certainly here in the Al, in, in the Albion building, as well as Battle Creek. You know, obviously with influenza B and everything that we've seen this year, it's been a outbreak. We've had some school districts that have actually shut down because of the, because of sickness. So if you haven't had a chance to get your flu shot, there's still time available to do so. So just some information there. Quickly, my monthly newsletter. It will be available at the Albion District Library tomorrow morning. Certainly you can get it available by email as well. Email me with a very discreet email I use, so your email does not get shared with anybody. It's a great resource to know what's going on in and around the 7th district. And if you ever see me on the street, please don't hesitate to ask me for one because I usually am carrying them with me. So again, it's a great resource to know what's going on. This month, I talk about some different things. Actually, one of the things that I haven't done and I has planned on doing it was some of those, it's a committee spotlight, if you will. Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Substance Use Disorder Policy Oversight Board is one of the committees that I serve on. Say that three times fast. It's eight regional counties in southwest Michigan. And what I provided this month on page four was admissions data in Cowan County, as well as prevention-based outcomes. Which many of you know that the Albion Homer Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition is part of that. And we obviously met all of our, our prevention-based outcomes, so very good news on there. Certainly, Mr. Bonner is the, the head of that. And I'm certainly glad to be a part of that committee. But on the admission data side though, interesting enough, of the eight regional counties that we, that this area covers, that heroin abuse submissions have been significantly larger than anybody else in those eight regional counties. We've had 38% of our admissions in Cowan County of heroin admissions. Actually, we did see a 6% decrease last year, which reduced it to 32%, but still significantly higher than what we see in other counties. Interesting enough, alcohol has stayed constant at 35%. We actually have seen opioids reduced by 2%, which is a good thing. Marijuana abuse up to 2%. Cocaine and crack increased by 2%. And then meth and speed actually increased, doubled from 5 to 10% in terms of admissions. And remember, that's admissions data that's done. So what we're seeing is even though we are reducing in some, and especially with the opioid situation, that there are alternatives out there, cheap alternatives that people are referring to, and heroin is a significant problem in Cowan County. So just some information for you to look at. And on the prevention-based outcome side, as you well, many of you know, we have Drug Takeback Day, Takeback Day each year. It's something that we work on very hard to try to see what we can get. This year, we got about 110 pounds of the 200 pounds that we were getting here within the Albion Homer Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. So certainly we're working on bettering that. But as a eight-regional county-based, we actually upped our goal in terms, we went over our goal by 32%. We collected over 22,000 pounds of, of prescription medications in that eight-region county. So lots of positive things going on from that aspect, so I just thought I'd give you that information. On page five, my favorite subject of all time. I will be buried with a piece of road next to me. You'll be a little asphalt in my, in, next to me. So I focused this month on a recent statewide result that was from the Detroit Regional Chamber survey that was connected, connect, that was actually conducted in January of 2020. Interesting enough, as you might say, Michigan, as it says, it's still all about the roads. When by a wide margin, 29.5% of all Michigan voters rank roads and bridges as our number one idea. That's, that's not surprising, correct? Interesting enough, roads and bridges were ranked as the top issue in Michigan. Interesting enough, roads and bridges were ranked as the top issue in Michigan amongst every demographic group. So young, old, no matter who it is, that's the number one issue collectively across the board. When voters were asked if Michigan roads have gotten better, worse, or stayed about the same, 46.3% say they've gotten worse. 40% have said they're about the same, and only 11.7% said they got better. So we like to know where those folks are because obviously they aren't around our area. But what it tells you is, is that 86% of the people still say there's no solution, and it's not getting any better in our state. Interesting enough, then when voters were asked if Michigan government had enough money to fix the roads, by a margin of 53 to 33%, people say, yes, we have enough money to fix the roads. So, and I'll talk about that a little bit more as we move forward. When voters were asked if more money, if more money was raised, who they would trust most to make sure their money was spent the right way. Care to guess who that is? Cities and townships were trusted most by 29, by 29% of the people. The least amount of trust, state government. So interesting enough that, you know, we talk about my road plan, and my, my plan is to give money down to the cities and townships where it belongs, the locals. Why, isn't it interesting and amazing that the majority of the people agree with that very subject? So interesting enough, voters were asked if they were more or less likely to support an increase in road revenues. As we know, we've talked about gas taxes, we've talked about different things. 47.4, almost 50% of the people said they would be willing to pay more if their local government was the one in charge of those funds. And you know, that's very simple why, because most of the people in local government, that you know who they are. They can come up to you and say hi, and they can ask those questions. Where at the state level, there's no, there's no control, there's no, those really know from, from my, there's no accountability to be had there. So what I say from that is, it kind of points in the very, very essence of what I've been stating with my road plan since I did it six months ago. Is the fact is, the cities and townships need to have a chance to actually do what they need to do. You know, under my plan, the state of, or the city of Albion gets $1.8 million additional funding, $1.3 million for streets, and yes, a half million dollars for bridges. Because think about this, you guys know this very well, we just, we just failed on an attempt to get a grant, which again, grants are not the way to go about funding mechanisms. We weren't successful on North Albion Street. If many of you have been down there on North Albion Street, you tell me, it's bad shape. We literally could have a young person, young child that could fall through the, through the, through the middle there and fall into the river at this point in time, that's how bad it is. And it's very close to be closing. And interesting enough, I don't know if you've seen this, but Frank Passick, who is the Albion historian, stated the other night that on, the North Albion Street Bridge collapses into the Kalamazoo River on September 1st, 1914. So if, so Williams, this, this tractor that was owned by a resident fell into the river as the bridge's steel gave away. And it states here is, "The dismal condition of the current bridge will history repeat itself with this kind of action." Now, I'm not, I mean, I say that jokingly, but really seriously, folks. We know the inspector is going to come in, and within the next six months, that bridge is probably going to go down. And we have a choice to make what we're going to do, because the state's telling us, you didn't get the grant, so therefore you don't get a chance to redo this grant until 2023. So this road, this, this bridge doesn't have three years left in it. So what are we going to do? Are we just going to sit on our hands? I hope not. Because here's what the great thing about it is, and this is a thank you to the Albion City residents, which I tell you what, you guys have been wonderful in terms of taking my cards, to call the people, like I, like I've asked you to do, which you guys have been incredible at, because we're finally seeing some cracks. I do have a couple of contacts I've actually made at the state level that are starting to look at it in a serious manner. So we're making, so when I say that you guys are powerful, I truly mean that. They don't want to listen to me, but they're listening to you folks. So I would continue, call them, call them, and call them, and don't give up the fight on this. Because no, and this is no disrespect to the governor, because, because obviously she's making at least ideas out there. And a whole lot, there isn't a whole lot of anybody else making ideas. But that $3.5 billion isn't going to fix the Albion Street Bridge. It's not going to fix the Albion City Streets. That three and a half billion is going to go to the east side of the state, nowhere close to Albion, or at least my district in the 7th. So that's not the solution to the problem. As I've stated many, many times, you can throw as much money if you, as you want to at the problem, but if you don't, you don't solve the root cause of the problem, you can throw billions of dollars at it, but we're never going to see what we need in order to fix our streets and our bridges. And I hope the fact is 1914 doesn't, doesn't unfortunately repeat itself in the city of Albion. I would hope that wouldn't be the case. So again, if you have the cards, keep, keep calling, keep doing what you're doing, because it's making a difference. And I will say, we're not going to give up the fight on this. I've had people tell me, oh, you know, Gary, I don't want you to try this, it's bad. I'm up for challenges, just like all of us are. And we're going to see this thing through. And at some point, it's going to make, make some sense. So again, something to think about. So I would certainly appreciate your help if you continue, continue that fight with me, because we're going to get this done at some point in time. Page six talks about my frequent asked questions are in the 2020 census, census, excuse me, and the importance of making sure everyone fills out that census, and that the programs that can be impacted can be health services, school programs, senior support. And as a matter of fact, we have our executive director from the Fork Senior Center here that knows how important those senior services are. So on March 12th, you're going to be seeing postcards that'll be delivered to your doorstep in your mail. Take advantage of the opportunity and have everybody in the community fill those out. Because it is important, because funding is based on those, on that census total. And I'll tell you, if you don't fill it out, you decide to throw it away like some may, you're going to have enumerators, you're going to have people coming, knocking on your door saying, hey, excuse me, in May, you haven't filled it out yet. So you'll get a card on March 12th, it'll tell you all of what you need to do in terms of getting the census filled out. It's about eight questions. It's not a very long census at all, but it will help us get the vital funding that we need going forward. So like I said, take that opportunity. There's a variety of ways, even on, on the internet, and there's other methods. So take advantage of that, and I've got some frequently asked questions there. And then finally, I had a gentleman from the Battle Creek area of Habitat for Humanity get in touch with me and ask me if he, if he would, if I would put something in my newsletter about his to-be-held on March 3rd through 7th in Albion, a woman build. So it's pretty cool information. I will suggest, if you'd like to know more about my information, there's a phone number on there, and if you'd like to get involved on this very, very cool project that'll be coming to Albion from the Habitat for Humanity, take advantage of it. So again, something to, something to be, I would expect to be very cool, certainly, for the city of Albion as we move forward. So again, in closing, I will just say, thank you folks for the work, for those that you have, that have called. Thank you for your help. I do appreciate it. It is making a difference. And continue, and continue, and continue. Let's not give it up. Let's keep pushing the envelope on this. So again, thank you for all your help, and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to get to a point where we're going to be successful on that. It just takes some time, but we'll get there. So. Anybody have any questions for me this evening? If not, thank you very much, and you guys have a great evening. All right? Thank you very much.
Sure. Any further public comments?
Hello, Marquita Frost, 520 West Cass Street, and I would be remiss if I did not make this comment. I just want to say publicly, I want to thank the city council for supporting the Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church Mental Health Fair that happened on January 25th. And not just the city council, but the entire city of Albion. The mental health fair was headed by my pastor, Pastor Bobby J. McKenzie, with his wife, Justine McKenzie. We also have members of our church here, Ms. Christina Crawford, who is our secretary, and Damon Reed, who is one of our deacons, and it was a family affair. But we had representatives from all areas that deal with mental health. I want to thank the Fork Senior Center, Harry Bonner and the Substance Abuse Prevention Service, Mr. Gary Tompkins, the mayor for coming, Mrs. Lynn Reed. It was a packed house. Mr. Al Smith was there. Yes, everyone was there. And the topics that we covered were serious. There were serious comments from community members based on communication with the different agencies that deal with mental health, and there is a serious issue that needs to be addressed for the Albion residents dealing with just talking to someone and getting something done, action. And so this is not the last event that will be held. There will be more, because we see more needs to be done, and the public needs answers. So mental health is definitely serious, and we will be coming to you with more things coming. And we hope that we get the same support that we had before. But it was a wonderful educational time, and some people thought it was just like a little fair, but it was, the panel was expertly put together and done. We had representatives from Jackson, the probation, we had Scott Kip with the Department of Public Safety. We had the superintendent of schools, Mr. Randy Davis, and plenty more. And so Senator John Byzon was there, his daughter, who is a psychologist. It was just amazing. And so we want to convene those people again, so we can get some serious answers done for our community, because we do believe it is important for us to address mental health for all people, not just women or children. So just thank you again to the city council for your support, and those that helped to advertise as well. Mr. Stewart here and his wife also helped to advertise it in the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we have further public comments this evening? Okay, we'll close public comments. City managers' report.
Your Honor, members of council, you've received the city manager's report. Just a few things real quick. I provided you with an update on the North Clark Street Grant Project. We are anticipating receiving the grant agreement soon. We did file the direct grant application, since the project will be managed locally rather than through the Michigan Department of Transportation. And the reason for that is that it would, it would add literally weeks, if not months, to get the project done, and so we would be looking at probably a 2021 project rather than 2020 if we did not manage it ourselves. I met with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Fisheries Division a couple of weeks ago to discuss the $25 million in settlement funding for the Kalamazoo River improvements. And we talked about the possibility of undertaking dam restoration and dam removal studies, feasibility studies, through that funding to determine the most feasible alternatives for the city moving forward. We talked about just looking at the Albion Dam at Victory Park, as well as looking at all five of the dams within the community. And we are gathering additional information on those alternatives. I will keep you posted on that. The mayor and I met with the Marshall Public School Superintendent on January 27th to talk about the, the rumors that were going around about the, about the debt millage equalization. And I appreciate Dr. Davis's time and effort to explain to us exactly what the situation was, that right now, they are, they are in the mode of looking at all possible alternatives to keep the debt millage down for all of the taxpayers within the school district. But that definitely no decisions have been made in that regard. The mayor and I met with Sheridan Township Supervisor Dick Porter to talk about the, the economic impact of the proposed solar energy farms that are planned for the township. They are looking at the possibility of a total of 8,000 acres slated for solar panel installation throughout the township. And they presented some information to us on the potential economic benefits to the entire area, both the city and the township. And we appreciated Supervisor Porter's time in that regard. Clerk Domingo and I participated in a project kickoff meeting for the I-compass Legislative Management System to begin the setup of the new system. Key staff and board and commission members will be trained on the new system once, once we have it set up. And we anticipate at this point, and Clerk Domingo, correct me if I'm wrong, but going live with the system sometime in April, I think in late April we were talking about. I want to say thank you to Councilor Smith for inviting me to visit the food hub and watch the volunteers unload the food truck and sort food for distribution. It was a very interesting visit and seeing so many wonderful people involved and, and volunteering their time to help with that. It was absolutely amazing. I noted that the city council does have a study session scheduled for Monday, February 10th, at 6 o'clock PM at the Leddington Center to discuss the proposed rental certification and inspection program. And we strongly encourage landlords, tenants, and all other interested citizens to attend that meeting and to participate in this important discussion. I attended the Albion College Martin Luther King Junior Day reception at the Leddington Center and the convocation at the Boom Theater on January 28th. What a wonderful event. It was very moving and definitely a wonderful tribute to the legacy that Martin Luther King has left for our country and the world. I attended the Precinct One Town Hall meeting at the invitation of Councilor Clark and had the opportunity to answer questions that citizens raised about the sidewalk program fund review work. There is definitely interest in the community around what the decisions will be regarding utilizing the sidewalk program fund monies. As requested by the mayor, I provided you with a report on the current status of city government staffing. And I am happy to talk to council members. If you have questions, please feel free to give me a call or email me. If, if you do have questions, I'm more than happy to provide further clarification to you on, on the staffing situation. I do want to note once again that I have established extended office hours on Thursdays by appointment from 5 o'clock to 7 o'clock PM. So if citizens, business owners, civic organization members want to meet with me after hours, if it's more convenient for you, feel free to call my office or email me to set up an appointment for Thursday evenings. I would love to have the opportunity to sit down and talk to you. And, Your Honor, I provided with a list of some of the items that you can expect will be coming up on some of your upcoming meetings, just for informational purposes. That's all I have at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Questions from council? For the city manager on his report? Seeing none, we'll move into mayor and council member comments. Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. I just want to, excuse me, mention that I've had personal firsthand experience with seeing how, what a horrible shape the South Albion Street Bridge is in. And I personally avoid it, period. And we've heard time and time again from Commissioner Thompson about the deterioration and how the horrible shape that it's in as well. And I guess I just want to, for council, for us to consider and the city manager, is there something that the city can, can do to look out for the welfare and the safety of our residents and our visitors without something happening? I realize bridges belong to the, the owner and the keeper is the state of Michigan, if I'm not mistaken. But I think that we need to think about as a city, and I don't even know if it's council, about doing something to help keep our residents safe. That bridge is horrible, and I'd hate for somebody to fall in and then after the fact, we say, oh, we should have done something. So just kind of putting that out there for us, something to think about.
City owns the bridge. Councilwoman Reed.
See, oh, well then, we should really do something then.
Yeah, we own the bridge. And, and two, it was two years ago, when Senator Noss was going out of office. I took him and Dr. Byzon, Gary, a bunch of us went down, and we looked, and we went down under there and saw how rusted it was and everything. So I was talking with Dr. Byzon about that a couple of weeks ago, and I told him that we had heard back that they were not going to fix it because that was Albion's problem. And I also talked to Mr. Hasma, and Dr. Byzon is sending someone over from his office to take pictures. I haven't got the call yet, but it's supposed to be this, this week, to take pictures and, and to go down, pay the bridge again and take a look. So is Mr. Hasma, because they really want to, to, to help us in pushing the issue of getting something done about that bridge. And so I don't know what, but I know that they have agreed to take active interest. And, uh, so, I don't know what, but I know that they have agreed to take active interest in, 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 uh, working with us on providing to get something done about the bridge. So.
Councilwoman Williamson.
So I have a couple of things I wanted to say, uh, just been kinda keeping track on like. The first one I wanna say is that I'm really excited to see the transformation of Holland Park come to a conclusion, and, and get the new pavilion, and possibly the new sidewalk. It's very exciting to see that project from start to finish, having, just being a community member before, uh, being on council, it's quite exciting. Secondly, um, tonight it was really sterile how we passed, uh, the Oprah District, you know, we kinda just went through and we voted and we said yes, and I don't think we, we need to recognize how big of a commitment this is in our community. Uh, like, once again, our downtown is gonna completely transform over the next one to three years, um, and we really made a big statement tonight by saying Albion's open for business, we're open for redevelopment, we're excited about the opportunities that could happen downtown. Um, so I'm really excited to see new facades and new buildings, and hopefully some new businesses open up downtown, and I hope everyone else is as well. Um, I wanted to talk about Marshall Public Schools, uh, briefly, um, you know, there was all this, there was a big hullabaloo about the possibility of a debt equalization millage, and that's not exciting at all, it's not exciting stuff at all, but moving forward, we know that, um, there's a group of people meeting at Marshall Public Schools, um, in Albion and in Marshall, uh, assessing the, uh, situation around the school buildings, and making sure that every kid has a safe, inviting, uh, place to go to school. And so I think, I think we need to keep our ears open for opportunities where we may have to do something about that with our millage rates, to be able to provide either a new school or a new academic space, um, for, for, for kids not, not just located in Marshall, but also located in Albion who are part of the Marshall Public Schools. And so, um, while it's not fun to talk about, uh, safe, uh, nice facilities for all of our kids is really, really important, so I think we need to keep our eyes and ears open for those opportunities as they come up in the next year. Um, then finally, uh, two things, Kids and Stuff Play Forward Event is March twenty-first. Um, last year it was their sweet sixteen, this year they're seventeen, so that's not as cute or fun of a birthday, so it's Play It Forward this year. Um, it's a very exciting, it is a fundraiser, it's a ticketed event, but what's really exciting about this is that Albion College students are collaborating with, um, this downtown business to, um, make it just a really fun evening, and so I hope all of you are looking forward to that, um, they do have a Facebook page started, um, and it's really exciting the collaboration to take place for that event. And then also, um, there is this entity called the United Way of Homer and Albion, or the Albion Homer United Way. Um, I serve on the board, um, and I wanna invite everyone who has not made a campaign gift these last couple of months to make that gift. Um, there are some huge things happening in Albion, um, that the United Way has been able to be a part of, including the, uh, food hub, food distribution, uh, school programming, um, we've given money to Kids and Stuff. I think if you name an organization, the United Way's, uh, helps serve it, and I wanna invite everyone else to make that gift, um, this year. And don't worry, if you don't make it this year, we'll be back in your inboxes in October. So, um, you can make that gift at the Albion Community Foundation. Marcia Starksy is the executive director of the Albion Homer United Way, and you can contact any board member, our information's online, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Smith.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I do want to be sure to, um, echo, uh, Mr. McLeary's, yeah? Uh, echo his, uh, behest to come out on February tenth to the meeting at the Luddington. Uh, this is gonna be one of the most serious things that happens in Albion for years. We have to be sure that we talk this through, all citizens, um, uh, like I said, landlords, tenants, no matter who you are, we need to talk this through, we need to know where we're going. So please come out to that meeting on February tenth. Uh, my next one was going to be the, uh, next Precinct Three, um, precinct meeting will be held at Saint Paul's Lutheran Church, uh, in the community room downstairs, where they have all those fabulous meals. Uh, Commissioner Tompkins has said that he'll be there again to, uh, talk with us and let us know what's going, going on in the county at that time, and Chief Kip has also agreed to come along and talk with us about, uh, drug houses in the third precinct, and how we as a community can come together and help to move those people forward. So, please come out, and I'll, I'd be remiss if I don't thank my colleagues on council for a wonderful meeting, um, it, it's been great every time so far. Uh, thank you for allowing me to participate.
What's the date for your Precinct Three meeting at Saint Paul's?
I'm sorry, that'll be the eighteenth at seven o'clock.
I'd just like to say thank you to all of, of you all that came out to support Holland Park, I do appreciate it, and, um, I, I just want you to keep an eye out, because you're gonna see some, some things happening down there that's going to really be, uh, fantastic. Soon as we get that pavilion up and, 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 uh, the sidewalks, or if we get the sidewalks, but to get the pavilion up is going to be, make a, a big change in it. And, uh, there was some, oh, um, I will keep the council informed on what's going on with the schools, because I'm on that committee, and so, uh, we've only had two meetings, one they looked at Harrington, last week we looked at, uh, the school in, one of the schools in Marshall, and every Wednesday we take another school, so what they come up with, I will let you know.
Councilwoman Law.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I just, this question is, uh, directed to, um, city manager about the North Clark Street, um, grant. Um, did, did you say that you, you were trying to get it to twenty twenty-one?
No, uh, if we were to have the Michigan Department of Transportation manage the project, let the bids and do the entire process, it wouldn't be completed until twenty twenty-one. We opted to manage the project locally, and so we filed that direct, it's called a direct grant program, where they provide us with the grant funding and we manage the project ourselves, so that the project could get done this year.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, could you make sure that this project does not get in the way of project, of, uh, Precinct One's project? As far as like, um, I know you, um, there was conversation about matching funds, and, um, if you could kinda, um, maybe at a later date, clear the, um, rumor about, um, the funds that we had set aside for the twenty twenty project, for our Precinct Ones project, um, to not take those funds and use it for this project. So if you can kinda clear that up at a later date, that would be helpful to our community.
Sure, I will, I will put that in my next report. I know that, uh, I know that first, second, and third, and, uh, that area was, was, uh, top priority for the council, and you had discussed that when you had discussed this project. So I will provide you with an update on that.
Thank you.
Okay. My comments, I'll start off with the, uh, a question for the city manager, city clerk. Do you have names from every precinct on the sidewalk committee that are gonna get together and come back with a recommendation on how the money is go, is recommended to be distributed and spent? If not, which precincts do you not have a representative?
I have heard from most, if not all, council members. I'd have to look at my list, 'cause I was sticking those emails into a, into a file for the committee. Uh, I can't recall if I've heard from everybody, I heard from one council member tonight, uh, so I will double check on that and let you know, mayor.
All right. And those that are, have been identified to be on that, please make sure they're notified when they're gonna meet and get started, and as a reminder, uh, Ms. Stacy Stewart will be the person I've recommended, and if you can get hold of any counselors tomorrow, early, to let them know that, uh, you don't have their nomination yet or their person. Okay. Uh, Project Rising Tide, wrapping that up, and there is a ceremony at four PM tomorrow with the Luddington Center. Uh, echo the, the importance of getting a good turnout for the study session on Monday on the rental cert, very, very important that we hear from the community, and as Councilman Smith said, we need to get this right, whatever gets implemented, if it gets implemented, when it gets implemented, how, et cetera, very, very important, there's pros and cons. Uh, and I wanted to personally thank Marqueta for the mental health fair at Macedonia, and, uh, both you and Ms. Gressi Vargo for the MLK dinner and the program that you organized, thank you very much for that. Still looking for census workers from various precincts, uh, so, do you have the information or not you? As to what, how, which precinct they're still trying to find census workers from? Okay. Okay, but we are looking for election workers, and that's you can identify the precincts that you need election worker representatives, so, uh, it's a good opportunity to be part of the, uh, civic process, and so I encourage those to do that. And last but not least, we do have a variety of commissions, uh, that we need people to step forward, that are willing to serve, that can pass the vetting, no back taxes and fees, uh, so, if you know of somebody, ask them to consider it, and, uh, have them give me, give me a call, put in their application to move forward. Any other comments by council? Okay. Next is motion to excuse absent council members. Councilwoman Clark, may I have a motion?
Some of them.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
She is excused. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn. I'm sorry?
[inaudible]
Thank you for coming here.